Good evening. Welcome everyone, I'll call the meeting to order. You would please join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here. Here.
Here. Here.
Thank you Ms. Rice. Mr. Lloyd did let me know that he would like to join electronically tonight. So according to school board policy, BDD, electronic participation in a meeting from remote locations, a school board member may participate in a meeting by electronic means when a quorum of the school board is physically assembled at the meeting location and arrangements have been made for the voice of the remote participant to be heard by all persons at the meeting location. These requirements have been met. The board must approve the electronic participation by a majority vote of the members who are physically assembled. Can I get a motion to allow Mr. Lloyd to join? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Mr. Lloyd, can you hear us? Mr. Lloyd? You. Okay. Okay. Can you hear us? While we're trying to get that hooked up. Got a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Citizen comments, no one has signed up. Those. Dr. Husken. Lloyd?
I was just checking. Good evening, everyone. It's so great to have such a large crowd. We have a lot of things that we're going to be celebrating here tonight. And thanks to everyone that is either joining us virtually or is attempting to join us virtually. We're hoping that it's going smoothly. That our YouTube channel. And thank you all for joining us. Again, we have lots of things going on tonight. And I'm going to keep my remarks very brief because I'll be back later this evening to give you all our state of the schools address. And that's always, again, lots of great things to talk about. I do want to give out a great shout out for those of you all that were on the planning team for our Blueprints for Dreams, our academic planning event. That was the first one we have done last Tuesday evening at the middle school. The cafeteria was filled, the gymnasium was filled. So many people were part of the event itself. And then it was just such a great turnout for so many families there just invested in discovering all of our pathways and all of our courses and all of our programs. The best part of the night was it was so student driven. Students were doing the lift of their own programs, this ownership. This was just incredible. And that just, that just was so, thanks to everyone who had a part in planning that, dreaming that, and dreaming big. And again, just thanks for all of that fantastic. This past Saturday, we had another great job fair. And every school, every department, every, everyone just came. And it always feels, it feels like, I don't know another way to say it, it just feels like a party. But it really is not. But everyone was just on hand, invite candidates in, just tell them about our potential open, invite them to become part of our, part of our team. It's a wonderful and it was just fantastic. It takes a lot. It doesn't just magically happen that, okay, we're going to have this thing up. It takes a lot of planning. It's all around our theme, building dreams. So just thanks to everyone for making that happen and making it so successful. So again, that's all for now. As know, weather is not being our friend right now. Again, everyone just, just continue to stay safe. I am no longer a fan of Groundhog Day, over it. We're all ready for spring. Enough for now.
Thank you, Dr. Husken. Appreciate that report. Good evening again, everybody. Welcome. It is good to see almost a full house. Hope most of you all are staying well as the blue rolls through Eric County and through the nation. Just a little update on what the board has been up to since our last meeting. It's, we've had a bit of a busy time. Ms. Comer, Ms. Shottwell, Ms. Runyon, Dr. Husken and I attended the Virginia School Board Association Conference in Richmond at the end of January. We heard some great speakers on day one. Day two, we visit the General Assembly. If you've never been there when they're in session, that is a crazy, crazy place. It is people going everywhere. Dr. Husken, Ms. Comer, Ms. Runyon met with Delegate Wright and I think had a productive meeting. Ms. Shottwell and I met with State Senator Mulkey and had a good meeting as well. And also spent some time in a Finance and Appropriations Committee meeting, which was, which was pretty, pretty interesting. They have a lot of issues that they're, that they're facing and dealing with in the General Assembly this session. One issue that we're waiting for is a budget. We did have a very productive budget work session this past Friday while we anxiously anticipate the final numbers there. This past Friday, Dr. Husken and I did a couple of school visits. Special thanks to Mr. Duffer and Mr. Courtney for showing us around your schools. Always enjoy getting out and seeing all the, all the good things that are going on in our, in our school system. Sometimes as a board, we hear some of the bad, but it's, it's always a lot of positive going on as well. It just doesn't, doesn't make it us quite as fast. Lastly, February is School Board Appreciation Month. And I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all of you all for the job that you do and what you bring to our board. Thank you. Vice Chair Clay?
I'll go hold that young lady up. She has a lot more to talk about than I do.
Ms. Williams, student representative. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Dr. Husken, Chairman Mason, Vice Chairman Clay, and all other school board members. The Comets at Halifax County High School have finally gotten into the flow of the second semester. Students have been in school for two full weeks without any inclement weather. I jinxed it. And those weeks have been, weeks have been full of action. Being in school consistently has given students time to get used to their new classes and they have begun to thrive. Last Tuesday at Halifax County Middle School, students and parents got a chance to learn about the different courses, diploma types, graduation requirements, and certifications offered at Halifax County High School. It was a night full of information and fun. Students who are a part of the Our School, Our Voice Student Advocacy Group had a chance to give their opinions on different artwork and signage that will be showcased in the new school. These students got the opportunity to see all the possible graphics that could be displayed in the, in the high traffic areas throughout the new high school. Girls and boys' basketball, winter cheer, wrestling, swim, and indoor track are all starting to wrap up their seasons as tryouts for spring sports will begin later this month. Both girls and boys' basketball are looking to end their season strong and carry that momentum into the postseason. Our wrestling team is looking to their next regional tournament this Friday at Orange County High School. They have continued to be successful throughout their season. Our girls and boys' swim teams both excelled at their district tournament. Both teams placed first in the district and were amazing representatives of Halifax County High School. The indoor track and field team have continued to have a successful season as more and more athletes continue to qualify for states in their individual events. They are gearing up for their regional meet next Monday at Shenandoah University. The Scholastic Bowl team finished their undefeated season. They placed first in the district and were victorious against five different schools. They were great representatives of Halifax County High School. The Student Council Association is continuing to plan events for student fun and engagement. This week, students will partake in Comet Love Spirit Week where students are asked to participate in different spirit days to show their love and appreciation for others. The spirit days consist of themes like the perfect pair, where students are invited to dress as a duo with a friend, or Wednesday's theme of night in or night out, where students can choose to dress up or keep it cozy. This, as prom season approaches, YOFSO is gearing up for this year's Arrive Alive campaign. The Comets were finalists in the Buckle Up Project and won a reward of $100. Local businesses have generously donated incentives to encourage students to continue, continue to buckle up. In response to student feedback on mental health topics that are important to them, Peer Mediation is partnering with Southside Behavioral Health to continue promoting mental wellness. Speaker Sean Derrick is also coming to speak to students in March. OSA has a guest speaker coming to speak to club members Thursday about different heart health and cardiac careers available in honor of February being American Heart Month. They are continuing to fundraise and discuss activities for students to participate in for the remainder of the school year. FPLA has elected officers and has finished collecting cans for donations. They collected a total of 300 cans and donated them to the Good Samaritan. They are continuing to plan different fundraisers for the rest of the school year. February is another opportunity for students to continue to be their best. As we continue to progress through the school year, one thing is clear, we love to be Comets. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you always for that report. Committee reports, Capitol Conference, anybody want to add any? Dr. Husken, floor is yours again, ma'am.
All right. So it is School Board Appreciation. And we recognize our school first. Applause, applause, please. You guys work incredibly hard. You all do not know what it takes for the things that they do behind the scenes. It's so much more than this meeting. Lloyd is not with us, but he is on the phone, so thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Chairman Mason?
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Clay? Oh, well. Sally Comer? And Mr. Walter Potts is not able to be with us this evening. Well, I haven't gotten to her yet.
Best for life.
Yeah, that's it. Thanks, before I go down and do our Williams, our senior representative. And for whatever reason, they recognize us. But Chris has a brand new grandbaby coming, so she potentially, I don't know why, but maybe she doesn't want to be a part of this week. I don't know. We're going to recognize her this week. For you on the board. Of course, none of us will be able to do what we have you. Ms. Sam Price. Is our our board You will also notice we have a new face. And one of the things that the board asked us to look at a model for our senior representative or voice a model where their responsibilities for the start of the year gets submitted when, when our senior is at representative. Ideas that leadership are senior. So our model is not to perfection yet because this is the first time we've done what this is truly, it is the hardest thing that we
It is the least favorite thing that you drag me to.
Yes.
This is the second time.
Come on down here. So you do get to at least share in the enjoyment of introducing our new person. So Johan, please come. So tonight, I am so proud to introduce, come on, Mom and Dad, you get to come up here so you get to at least come and take the pictures. So tonight, I'm going to introduce our new representative. Hard to see next year, our senior is Johan Ibachi Lopez. He is currently a junior in our high school, is the son, Johan Ibachi, and son of Lopez. Was originally born in Columbia, came here in 2015 as a second grade student. Johan learned English very quickly. And those who know him will all agree, compassion is not just when he was speaking with us, we agree. You don't just talk to people. Yes, yes. He just you've never had a conversation with your business. Just find a reason. Whatever. So it is, it is a member of our Comets Swim Team. He's also a member of our Socrates. He prides himself on always being able to help his teammates understand win and lose. Win and lose. Not everything, also win as a whole team. That is so we are just excited for you and we will learn from you. Also, he's also a great as the, what's the name of, what's the name of the Superintendent's Advisory Committee? Because we don't like that. What did you all decide to call the team? Yes, he will try chair the Our School, Our Voice Committee next year along with two other young men. This year, it's, it's try chaired by three young ladies. Next year, that committee will be try chaired by three young men. So the goal of that group is, is to find students from every facet of the student body. And, and we get together and we just talk about all kinds of things. Chairman Mason, other, other things about our young men?
Well, I said it's the least favorite thing I do. So it's just like when we interviewed Ms. Williams, it was two or three other candidates that blew us away. And the same thing on the day of your interview. I mean, all the, all the, it was three guys, they did a great job. But we look forward to working with you and having to serve as the student representative. Thank you, congratulations.
It's too little. Mom and Dad, Mom and Dad, you want to, you want to come? Also, part of the Halifax County
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Our next celebration, if I can have the members of the, and the coaches with the Halifax County Middle School team to join us. Chairman Mason?
So without, without Coach Payton, I guess, he's going to take it officially.
Oh, absolutely.
I know you will. It always makes me laugh. Nothing lasts. This team was undefeated this past year, district champion. Undefeated the year before, district champions. Undefeated the year before, district champions. Undefeated the year before is as far back I can go in district champions. And it goes back a way. The job that Coach paid
Two thousand seven, how long ago was that?
Two thousand seven was the last time you did, that you didn't
No, we just started.
His arm's not long enough.
The job that you and Coach Graham do is phenomenal. Sorry, he can't be here, but you guys do a great job. You mentor these kids. You teach them a lot more than just golf. And I appreciate what you guys do. You have a liking. Not even
What do you, you go ahead.
Like I said, our goal is to win what we haven't done. We've had kids to go play. But the goal in middle school is to develop so they can play in high school and win us a state championship. We've come close over the years. I had a son that was, came close and we've had a trouble team. Jimmy Clay. If we could have all the Jimmy Clays, we would never lose. He's the best of the best. And that's very rewarding. His kid, I'm afraid, will not be in the group that says he's a couple of years out from coming. And hopefully, what you can't do with one is a team. Same way winning a state championship is a team. But these kids are good and the ladies are good scholars. That's one thing we maintain and they're good kids. I'm proud of them. I'm proud of all of the kids that are going through the problem. I just don't remember the name. But in twenty some years, they go the way. Thank you so much, sweetie, thank you. Kids, you got anything you want to say? That's the quietest thing been ever.
All right, well, let's, let's give them a little recognition, how about that? Just talking to you, Coach.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to hold on to his, make sure he gets it?
I will, thank you.
All right, thank you. Jacob Allen. You're not here. All right, let's do Crescent to win.
Yeah.
Kail Kasak. Congratulations. Brayden. Say it for me. Brayden, say your last name before we still get it right.
No, no, it's not you.
Macon. Macon.
He looks just like you.
James Horn. Eris Lawson.
Bed Dog.
Bed Dog. That is fun.
Theo Kelly.
Noah.
Noah. Maddie.
Maddie. Nicholas Page. Well, follow, save it up.
Gray Mason.
And let me say his name, Bentley Anderson. At least want to say his name. Congratulations. Thanks, everybody. Keep winning.
Go study.
Oh, my gosh, you got to come back, got to come back here for picture.
Oh, oh, we love picture.
All the way down, all the way up.
I need a raise.
Thank you all.
I think if anyone forgot our meeting starting at six.
Mr. Marasco. The floor is yours, sir. How are you?
Doing very well. Good evening to you all, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Husken, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be with you again. I know you've seen a lot of progress on the exterior of the building, but I can assure you in this past month, what you've seen on the exterior, we've done more than doubled on the interior. So let's get right into it. We have a lot to come discuss. We have a new senior superintendent on the job site. Shockey has provided us with a new senior superintendent. I would say that he is one of their closers. I've had many discussions with them and I believe we're in good hands. Temporary heating is on right now. We have all the openings either have doors on them, windows on them, or we have them tented in right now. So there is heat on the building and it feels much better in there than it does outside right now. We're installing permanent power per dominion. The building will be energized by the end of this month. We're performing the duct air leakage test We're performing the duct air leakage tech test inspections. That's just making sure everything's tight and buttoned up when we pressurize it. After that's done, we've started installing the duct work and the copper lines. We're also installing insulating the walls and getting final inspections on the walls prior to closing them up. Our ceramic tile is now on site. I'm sorry to arrive. We'll be doing the bathrooms here in the next week. Window installation is continuing. We're going to start window testing later this month. That's basically we come across, we have a third party independent testing firm that comes and basically shoots a pressurized stream of water like a fire hose to make sure we don't have any leaks. Metal panel siding is continuing. They're actually buttoning that buttoning that up up top right now. Glass curtain wall is ongoing. They've got the mullions in which is the framework for the glass. We're also completing installation of the RTUs. We're getting those out of the bus parking lot as soon as we can, as fast as we can. Continuing on, we have brick installation that's continuing around the building. We've got the loading dock footers. Those are now poured. We'll be doing that, working on that as weather permits. The painter has still spraying the dry fall on the block block filler, but we've also started our first coat of actual paint in the building now. Overhead coiling doors, those are being installed right now. They've been working on those in the auto lab and it'll be moving around the exterior of the building. The grease trap is installed and it's in the ground and that's buried and we are the plumbing to that is complete outside the kitchen. Low voltage, our security system installation, that's also in the beginning of this month. We're they're going to be out there starting the next couple of weeks, start pulling cabling. The main staircase, that is also being installed, your grand staircase. Also doing the handrails in the upper part of the gym. That's a lot of other metalwork going on. The elevator pits are all cleaned out, the shafts are cleaned up and they're prepped for the installers to come and start putting our elevators in, sorry. Also got the path of the propane tank farm. That is complete and the bollards are in. We're cleaning out the inlet and gutter protection and minimize some of the flooding that we heard that he had some concerns about in front of the school. They're going to try and keep up with that, keep that free of silt so we don't have any more pining of water. Minimize try and minimize that. Also installed new conduit, new wiring to the softball field and the baseball field to correct that wiring issue there. We've also completed installation of a French drain in the exterior in the outfield of the baseball field and that is already seated and prepped and ready to go. Upcoming meetings, we also have, we have to meet this week, we'll be meeting to finalize the student cafeteria, the student furniture and cafeteria furniture and the interior graphics as young lady spoke about earlier. We also need to get updated asbestos survey on the existing building. And when we start after that, we have that in hand, we can start collecting bids and bring a demo contractor on board to stop talking about that. Tax savings to date, we haven't had any more under direct purchase savings yet. Upcoming purchase orders we're looking at is for the student furniture, the outdoor cafeteria furniture, greenhouses, hazmat monitoring and demolition of the building. And photos here is this is typical of your classroom wings right now. You see that's the hallway of it. We have insulation all throughout, waiting for final inspections from Mr. Vaughn. We start covering that up. Here's the overhead coiling door installation in the automotive lab. You see that's they've already got all four of those up. This was as of last week. And here's your pouring the footers and the loading dock. This was as of last week as well. Right now, those are all poured and complete. And here's a progression in the quarter. This is outside of the main gym, north looking south on the west side of the gym. You can see we've got all the block filler primer on all the walls and we've started the you can see the duct work is insulated, copper work is insulated. And we've got the drive, we've got the framing there for a hard lit drywall ceiling. And here's a cooling tower that was also set this past month. That's that's being plumbed up right now. Once we get energized to the building, we can start working on getting that fired up and commissioned. And here's the auditorium view. I think last month when I showed it to you, working on those two large pillars in the back, those are now complete and we're basically waiting on the seating to come in right now. And here's an example of the first coat of paint in your locker rooms that you all is the color that you all agreed on with the architect last year. And it actually looks pretty decent, but that's only a first coat too. And finally, some aerial photos. This is obviously the front of your building right here. You can see they've got most of the roofing on. We're all just missing the part over the stairwell there in area A. They'll be jumping into that here shortly. And moving around, going counterclockwise, I guess, we're looking at on the bottom right, this is looking at your CTE areas. So you got the automotive lab down on the bottom right. You can see the cooling tower down there is set and the generator is set also. And coming around the other side, this is west looking east. This is excuse me, we've got the propane tank pad right there in the bottom. That's all poured, bollards are in. And this another look right here at the this is looking east, looking west. You can see we've got the metal panel siding on the left side right there. That's your academic wing B. The metal panel siding siding around the stairwell is all but complete already. And that is the presentation for this evening.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
It's really coming together, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it is.
Really coming together.
And there's a lot of things happening.
Mr. Marasko? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate all you do. Ms. Hastings and Ms. Saunders.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening. Dr. Husken, Chairman Mason, Vice Chairman Clay and board members. In addition to it being School Board Appreciation Month, and thank you for all that each of you do, it's also CTE Month. And I'm here to assure you that career and technical education is alive and well in Halifax County. So there are so many things that I could share with you all tonight in great detail. For example, my appreciation for our local industries like Anan and Comfort Systems, Gloucester, Hitachi, Huber, Presto, Apurian X, Novak and RTP. Each of these local industries collectively hosted a hundred and fifty of our juniors back in October for Manufacturing Day and our kids got to see CTE in action. I could share with you how our programs like culinary arts and horticulture create and produce things for our teachers to purchase within the building, like those delicious meals and all their fancy lettuce. I could share how our local industries support our programs when we need material pictured here are Presto and Napa. I could spend hours talking about how our alumni come back and create these full circle moments where they come and share their experiences and talk to our students about what's available to them after graduation. So pictured here is Trevor Smith from Small Town Design Co. talking to one of our graphic design classes. I could talk with you about the hours of preparation that our teachers put in for our students to be able to compete across our state, our region, our country and win accolades wherever they go. So these are some forestry students participating in a competition which we won back in the fall. We could talk for hours about the certifications that our students have already earned this year and the certifications that are to come in second semester for some of our year long programs. We could talk about how our students give back to our community with projects like lasagna love or visiting the nursing home or participating in community events like the Lights for Hope. Or how our kids work with real life businesses like the Holbrook Hotel or the Bee and give creative input and suggestions for how those companies can improve. Or we could talk about collaboration within our building for our monthly projects like healthy and independent living. And I could go on for hours and days about all the things that are happening in the world of CTE. But tonight I brought with me a program that should be near and dear to each of our hearts, especially as we think about the future of education in Halifax County. So with me tonight are Ms. Melanie Saunders to talk about Teachers for Tomorrow and one of our students who I will introduce after Ms. Saunders.
Hello.
Good evening.
This has been probably my first semester or first year that I have had all of my students want to be involved in teaching in some way, shape or form, which has been amazing. And it is a breath of fresh air. We are now going into, we're at South Boston Elementary with Susie Mylum. We we are in their second semester. All the kids go in first block. They have an individual classroom that they're in the entire second semester. Got some pictures here. What I did do different this first semester is we went into the other elementary schools. We normally have not done that. Before COVID, we were allowed to drive. So kids could go to Meadville, Cluster Springs, Sinai. We could go to different elementary schools, but being able to put have to get on a bus. We we have to get to a close school. So we go to to South Boston, but we were able to go to the other elementary schools and let our kids experience that and be with some teachers that they were with in elementary schools. So that's that was been very eye opening for us to not only see what's going on in South Boston, but to see what's going on in the other elementary schools as well. So these are just some pictures of my kids currently now at South Boston Elementary. They're really having a good time. I'm getting really good feedback from the teachers that are there. Bryson here is not with us this semester because he he had to take some other classes for graduation, but he is a very strong suit and it's it's awesome to see a guy that has the passion to teach because you just don't see it very often. So I'm going to step aside because I could talk all night. I'm like Bucky. I'm going to step aside and let Bryson warm up.
Good evening. My name is Bryson. I made this entire speech about my journey through education as a whole. So here I go. I'm a high school student, a teacher cadet and a paraprofessional at South Boston Elementary. My journey started with the early childhood education class where I became a teacher cadet, going to different elementary schools and learning about how to teach and be with the students there. It was also in that class where I got the chance to take the parapro test, which gave me a certificate to become an actual parapro. Then fast forwarding a few months later, I became a teacher cadet again for the Teachers of Tomorrow class, where I learned about not just teaching, but being there for the students as well, loving and acknowledging them as family. And while I was still going to school with my first and second block classes, my third block class consisted of me going to the Higher Ed Center for the work based learning class, where I learned about all the skills needed to adapt to be in a be in an official work environment. Work based learning also helped get me an official parapro job at South Boston Elementary. The parapro job itself is incredible. It always brightens my day to see all the smiling faces and interacting with them in all sorts of ways, from having fun to getting a chance to help and teach them. It can be a little chaotic, but but I love working with the teachers and kids there. It's a really fun experience being a parapro and I feel very lucky having this opportunity. Thank you.
So I'm super proud. I've known Bryson since he was a sixth grader at the middle school and we used to stand together at Car Riders every afternoon. And just to see the growth that has happened over the last six years and the bright future ahead of him, that's what it's all about. So if you'll skip to the next slide, we had an event earlier this year at Longwood that introduced us to a program at Longwood called Call Me Mister. And this is just like a minute long clip if you'll play that.
Call Me Mister is a great program on campus that teaches mentorship and how to become a better leader for not only the campus, but for the future students. I got involved with Call Me Mister because I really wanted to find a group of guys who understood what it was like to go through the struggles of teaching. So it was a great amount of support for Call Me Mister because they want to see us succeed. They want us to see us become teachers.
Whether it was application process, whether it's financially, whether it was of you need some help with school, if they can set you up with tutors. It was just a really welcoming and supportive program. It's here to become your guide on how to become a good leader in the community, a good teacher and a good mentor.
It's such a wonderful group. We have such a wonderful mission statement and we do fulfill and work, you know? You don't go into teaching for the money, you go into it for the people. And I'm definitely true for the people.
I want to become a teacher because growing up, I had great, great role models. Going to school was like going to a second home. Teachers that I enjoyed really made it feel lively. And I just want to promote student success. The best way to predict the future is to create it. And I think influencing young generations to go do great things, whatever they want to go do is a great way to get started and a great way to secure a better future for the whole world.
So we are planning a trip at the end of this month on February 24th to take some young men. That trip is getting bigger than I thought it was going to be. I thought we could take a car and we'd have one or two kids. I think we're up to eight now, young men who were going with us to Longwood just to explore, not to commit, but to explore the potential of becoming a a male teacher. So just like he said in the video, the best way to predict the future is to create it. And so we're proud to be creating the future of education here at home. So thank you for your service all the time. Thank you for your service all the time and especially thank you for your support of CTE here in Halifax. And I have a little CTE decal for each of you. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Dr. Husken?
Yes.
Might you give us the state of the school's report?
Absolutely. That's a hard act to follow there. Again, it feels like feels like a fantastic night of of celebrating all all the wonderful things and I I hope to continue more of that. Again, good evening, board members. Good evening to everyone who is still with us. Again, we are going to just continue to build on our theme of building dreams together and I am proud to share a brief update on our the state of our schools. So I will start with, this is our annual school report. That is again, a requirement that is published. It goes out on our it goes in the newspaper. It goes, there are several places where it is required on our website. Again, it's published in several places, but we're we just want to capture some really critical components. And again, there are just some things I want to highlight. Start with some some things here, just some fun facts, I guess. I like to kind of break it down for, okay, you you see the facts, but then what does it really mean? And and just common language, transportation. We we think about our transportation. We're super excited about our GPS system, about how we can keep track of our our folks. Again, it's another facet of safety. We think about, when you think about, okay, four million miles, four million miles? Really, our drivers drove four million miles last year? They drove to California seven hundred times. Okay, and there was some possible bumps in the road, absolutely. But if I drove to California seven hundred times, probably so. So food services, our folks served eight hundred eighty one thousand seven hundred twenty five meals last year. Wow. Okay, that's enough. Imagine inviting the state population of North Dakota to dinner. That's what our people did last year effortlessly. Were there bumps? Yes. Sometimes was the food not exactly what you might would serve on your your very best? Absolutely, but thank you. Thank you. If I invited North Dakota for dinner, might not might not be great every single time. Thank you, food service. Thank you, transportation. Thank you. And yeah, do we continue to work at it? Yes, we do. We're going to keep getting better at getting better. A hundred and twenty four bus routes. That's a lot of routes in addition to the the cars that go in every direction every single day. And for the most part, do it safely every single day, every single day. Another thing that I kind of want to pull out here, our seniors were awarded very close to a million dollars last year in scholarships. And that just says what what our community, our partnerships, our local businesses, our churches, our our people say their future matters. A million dollars in a community this size? That's a lot of money to that senior class, to three hundred kids. You divide a million dollars over over that and a lot of the, you know, and there's still money left on the table. That senior class didn't apply for every dollar that was available. So if anyone knows a senior, that money's out there. And our education foundation is saying to our seniors, they had a scholarship night this week. Seniors, apply, senior, apply for every dollar. It's out there, please. So you see it last year, those seniors got close to a million dollars. Now you start looking for it now. I'm telling you, tell your friends. This community takes care of its students and you do not. I think there's this this idea that, oh, if I'm not in the top ten, it doesn't matter. No, there's money for all sorts of all sorts of kids. So tell your friends, apply, take the time and apply. And it's not just if you're going to college. There they we we want money for kids going into CTE. We want, we want kids that are doing all sorts of things. And I got to move on, but I'm going to, I'm coming back. Okay, I'm coming back to that because that's a big deal for a community this size. So please do that. Okay, let's talk about student achievement. We had fifty students earn an associate's degree before they ever left high school, but I want to add something to that. We had way more kids than that earn significant amounts of credits. Because you don't just, you don't, it's, yes, it's a big deal that you got that whole associate's degree and you graduated, you know, you had two graduations, but you can also earn. you graduated, you know, you had two graduations, but you can also earn credits towards whatever your pathway is, and that's something that we need to build a deeper level of understanding around, that you don't have to get that whole associate's degree. You figure out whatever your pathway is, and you can build credits towards that that will transfer to whatever it is your interest is. So, you know, maybe next year I can come back and kind of drill down on what that looks like as well, because that's what we're working on. That's, that's part of our, building our dream, is building everyone's dream. It's not just you have to fit in this particular category or in this box. We are expanding our boxes, so whatever works for you. The other thing, and Ms. Hastings hit on this a little bit, 569 students last year earned career and technical certifications, making them job-ready. So whatever your, whatever your choice is, you have a certification in something, so that you're, you could go out right from high school and be certified on your resume. I can do this and this and this, because they're stackable, this and this and this, college and career ready. So that's a big deal. 93 students with an advanced diploma. That speaks to the rigor, okay? We're gonna, we're gonna keep growing that. All right, let's take a look at our, at our SOL scores. We are seeing some improvements, we keep looking at that. We're, you know, do we have growth? Do we have some areas we still need to work on? Absolutely, but we are 70% proficiency in math. That's a jump from 61 two years ago. And how did we get there? Well, we have teachers that are, that have committed to common language around the math standards for consistency. They've decided that, you know, one teacher's not gonna teach it because this is how they learned it. They've come together in rooms, and they've said, this is what the standard says. They've gotten rid of, you know, the need to know and really drilled down on the need to know. What do we, what do kids need to know? What will they know and be able to do around the standard? And they've gotten clarity around that, and they've committed to staying focused on that, so that students don't have to learn and relearn concepts based on, my teacher teaches it this way, another teacher teaches it this way, and they have to learn and relearn over and over again. So that, that improves overall student achievement, and we're gonna continue to work on that, and you will see that, that leads to continuous improvement. And they're analyzing the data, so that drills down on what is it that students need. And, and again, targeted skill development, and that builds that strong foundation. So writing still needs work, but we're up seven points. And again, these seem like small increments, but I mean, if, if my money grew by seven points, I get excited. If, you know, we think about, oh, wow, why is it not 10? Why is it not? But if we really think about percentage points, and you have a division of children growing by this amount, that is something to get excited about. When you've got a large lift like that, it is something to celebrate, because that says that your entire staff is doing that lift together. So we're getting common language and common focus around the standards, and we're doing that lift together. So, science, again, we've got STEM labs in our elementary schools, hands-on learning. We've got science kits, it says, you know, we're, we've brought those lessons, we're trying to do more hands-on. I give a lot of credit to the GoTech lab at the middle school, because there's a connection between what's in the classroom and those modules in the GoTech labs, because, you know, that is real-life science that they're also seeing in the classroom. And our, and our high school science department, you know, they're, they're just, again, focused on the standards, again, getting rid of the need to know, and really focused on what students need to know and be able to do. Alignment, you know, I will, I will just continue to speak to alignment around the standards. K-12, aligning to the standards, be consistent, be consistent to instruction. And really, it all goes back to, kids are in school more days, attendance. We are really attacking the truancy issue more consistently. Our attendance has improved. And I will say this, history is not included in state accreditation, and we all know that which is not measured is, you know, it, it, I don't want to say it falls to the wayside, but we have really focused on reading and math. So it is very important. History is very important. It is vital, and it's vital to a well-rounded education. So we are committed to strengthening our historical literacy and our critical thinking in all of our students, and so we're trying to fit it in or strengthen it in, you know, cross-curricular. And right now, we're working with, with the history folks and trying to get them doing the same kind of lift. And the other, the other piece to it is the DOE has, for a long time, had us into two sets of standards where they were testing old standards, but teachers were expected to teach new standards. So there's been this disconnect for years, so our, our scores have not really reflected, you know, the, the difference, and, and that's, that's been unfortunate, so. And let's look ahead a little bit. Our future is, is bright. We are the largest employer in Halifax County, so we're not really just shaping our students, but we're also strengthening our local economy. Our Stay With Halifax, Grow With Halifax, that incentive plan, along with consistent raises, we continue, we're continuing to improve our retention rates. We're keeping our talented educators in our schools. We're finding ways to put more licensed teachers in front of our children, and that is critical. And we're making hard decisions about, okay, we're, we're putting supports in place, we're trying to help folks get licensed, we're helping them pay for that license, but then at the end of the day, you have a window of time to make that happen, and we need that to happen, because our children deserve qualified, quality licensed teachers. And again, we're just gonna keep saying that, I'm gonna keep saying that, because that's what matters, and that really is what improves student achievement. So stay committed. We want excellence for our children, we want excellence for our staff, and we're gonna stay committed to that. So, I think, you know, Mr. Reska keeps giving us updates, we just keep seeing it actually happen. The new high school is, is gonna open next fall. It'll still feel like next summer, but that will continue to enhance career and our career and technical spaces along with our core spaces, but they're going to be side-by-side, so there'll be this cross-curricular feeling, and there'll be cross-curricular projects going on, and we're, we just are so excited for what that's gonna look like and how that's, how that's gonna happen. Again, we just want our students to have this real-world experience, this real-world skills to, to move forward. We continue to just be good stewards in our budget. Chairman Mason mentioned our budget. We just continue to be good stewards with our funds. We continue to look for and find efficiencies while still meeting all of our needs. We're not, you know, we're not, oh, we can't spend this, we can't spend that. I feel like we're continuing to, to do all the things that we need to do, but do them efficiently and do them well. And, and again, it just, it leads to making Halifax County Public Schools a good place to, to learn, but also a good place to work, and that's the kind of environment, that's our goal, and that's, again, with the support of, of you all as a board, that's our, that's our hope. So tonight, we're celebrating progress, perseverance, partnership, and we remain committed to building these dreams together for every student in Halifax County. I invite you to please, for more details on our performance, please go to the Halifax County website, our school's website. The full school report card is there, please check it out. You can see every school by detail, it's there, our school quality profiles. And again, thank you for supporting us, and thank you for your dedication, and again, Happy School Board Appreciation Month. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Husky. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great report. On to unfinished business, the Needful Cell Phone Tower that we discussed at last month's meeting, that we voted, I believe it was unanimously, to go into a land lease agreement and a revenue share with the county. Happy to report at the Board of Supervisors meeting last Monday, they also agreed unanimously to, to enter into that agreement as well. I believe we're having, is our attorney drawing up that agreement?
Our attorney, they sent over their version of the ground lease. Our attorney has reviewed that and has recommended, has made some suggestions and has recommended that they enter into some negotiations, because they have some suggestions, and so they recommended at, for you all to agree, if it meets your agreement, that you all allow the two attorneys to negotiate, and then they bring you back a recommendation for approval, which it, it seems like a lot of lawyer speak, and I think that's probably what should happen.
Do we need a motion?
I would say to allow the attorneys to move forward and negotiate.
I'd make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. All right. Committees. Each year we divide and conquer and decide who is gonna take on what committee. The Comprehensive School Safety Committee, we need one member, Ms. Comer.
That's okay with everybody else.
Thank you. Everybody okay with that? Facilities Committee.
I'll do that.
Ms. Runyon, we need one more.
I would like to stay on that if we can.
Wait, he's saying something.
He, he said he enjoyed, we're, we're fighting over our committee here, so.
Yeah, Stacy, I was on, yeah, I like, let Stacy be on it, because it needs some, I think we need to rotate off some of these committees.
Ms. Runyon and Mr. Lloyd, on that. Mr. Lloyd, I forgot we had you. Welcome, again. Hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Finance Committee, this is one we rotate, two members each quarter. I'll be glad to go on first quarter unless somebody has an issue with that, and...
I'll do first as well.
Everybody okay with, Ms. Runyon and I taking the first quarter? And do we, does it just rotate from there on, or do we sign up for the...
If someone has a specific quarter that they want or don't want, they usually let Dr. Buckland know.
Are you all okay with just the next two being randomly selected?
I would just request not in April, I'm gonna be on a long trip that time, so I would miss that month, and I'd, I'd like to be there for all of them if I could help it.
Sure.
I'll just do October and December with you then, we'll do the final one.
Okay, that works.
Okay, October, December, Ms. Comer, Mr. Clay, yeah.
I'll take before that, the, um, where'd that put us?
So we need April and June.
And July and September.
And July and September, yeah.
I'll do April through June.
You two want April and June. Ms. Rice, you getting?
July and September will be, is Ms. Lloyd in the spot?
Yes. All right. School Discipline Committee is attached. School Nutrition Committee, one member.
Who did that last year? I don't remember.
Ms. Comer, did you?
I did the wellness one.
You did the wellness.
Is that the same?
Ms. President, I was.
I do school nutrition.
You'll do school nutrition?
Okay.
All right. Special Education Advisory Committee.
I'll keep that one if that's okay with you guys.
That is fine. Superintendent's Parent Committee Advisory, that was me, and I'll be glad to keep it unless somebody else wants it. It looks like I got, all right. Virginia Preschool Initiative.
That was Mr. Potts. Keep him on it.
Okay.
Because that's in his district, because it's early in the morning.
That's right, yep. And Wellness Committee.
I was on that last year, but...
I'll, I'll take it since you took another one.
Ms. Runyon, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Code of Conduct Committee.
I can do that one as well.
Mr. Clay and Ms. Comer.
Okay.
Okay. Homework Committee.
I was on that, I, I don't, I can do that.
I don't mind going on that as well unless somebody else wants it.
And I don't mind, Derek, if you need another member.
Mr. Lloyd, you can add it. Okay. All right, very good. Michelle?
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, a move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of considering the following specific matters. A, personnel, the appointment, resignation, and salaries of specific division employees is authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and disciplining specific students of the school division is authorized by Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia.
Can I get a motion to go on and close?
That one, you need a second.
I need a second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no.